Welcome back, everybody. We will now call this meeting of the City Council to order. And we'll start with Office of the Mayor. And I have generally kind of done away with official presentations, obviously, under these unique circumstances, especially when we didn't have video. But today is the last meeting in April, and it is Police Appreciation Month in May. And we wanted to go ahead and honor that. And so I would ask the Clerk to read this proclamation, proclaiming May to be Police Appreciation Month.
Whereas police officers make a valuable contribution to our community by serving and protecting our citizens, and whereas the dedication and desire of Oklahoma City police officers to preserve a peaceful quality of life for all citizens is their foremost goal, whereas daily life-threatening hazards are an accepted requirement of the profession and most appreciated by a grateful public, and whereas certain events within the month of May lend themselves towards the positive recognition of Oklahoma City law enforcement personnel, and whereas the city wishes to announce the following days of observance and the activities planned in recognition thereof: May 1st as National Law Day, May 11 through 17th as National Police Week, May 15th National Police Officers Memorial Day, May 15th Oklahoma City Police Department Memorial Service, and May 15th as Oklahoma State Law Enforcement Memorial Service. Now, therefore, David Holt, the Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, has hereby proclaimed the month of May 2020 as Police Appreciation Month in Oklahoma City in recognition of the outstanding performance, service, and confidence exhibited by the Oklahoma City police officers.
Thank you very much. And we, especially at times of crisis like this, lean on and appreciate our law enforcement so much. We do have two other items under Office of the Mayor that do require votes. These are Items A and B for appointments. We can take them with one motion. These are appointments due to the Upstream Citizen Advisory Board and the Oklahoma City Redevelopment Authority. They are all reappointments. And as you know, this is the first time we can do the motions electronically. And so we do have a motion in a second. And now we will call the votes, which you will do electronically. Who is, is anyone not going to be voting?
Dave Greenwald is not present.
Okay, so Councilman Stonecifer. At some point, do I close the votes? How does that work?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, I think we're just going to go, he didn't vote, but we're going to go ahead and close the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Our first vote worked pretty well, James. Good job. All right. Item three, Journal of Council Proceedings. We have two items here. We can take with one motion. Thank you. You don't have to say it. We'll just do it electronically. So we have a motion in a second. The vote is open. And we'll go ahead. Councilman Stonecifer, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. I just don't have a vote option on my screen. We're trying, I've got my IT guy coming to fix it.
Okay.
Okay, well, he can just do voice.
Okay, he can do voice. Okay.
Everyone else can do.
What is your vote, Councilman Stonecifer? All right. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now, Item four, Request for Uncontested Continuances. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, on page 22, Item 8A2. This is, the advocate has requested to defer this item to May 26th of 2020. On page 24, Item 8A11. The S.P.U.D. 1191. The advocate has requested to defer this to May the 12th. We did have three items that are on already. On 8A1, 8A6, and 8A12 were already listed as uncontested continuances at the beginning of the agenda. On page 25...
Mr. City Manager, what was the second item you said after?
It was 8A11, S.P.U.D. 1191. And that's, so the first one was deferred to, 8A2 was deferred to May 26th. 8A11 is deferred to May the 12th.
Okay.
And then on these items, these will all be stricken under 8D1, Unsecured Structures. Item B, 3500 South Douglas Avenue, the owner is secured. Item C, 11901 North Eckerd Drive, the owner is secured. Item G, 1720 Homer Avenue, the owner is secured. Item H, 1401 North Independence Avenue, the owner is secured. Item K, 1827 East Park Place, the owner is secured. Item L, 1947 West Park Place, the owner is secured. Item N, 3610 Spring Lake Drive, the owner is secured. Item P, 1423 Northeast 13th Street, the owner is secured. Item Q, 1840 Northwest 14th Street, the owner is secured. Item R, 1748 Northeast 18th Street, the owner is secured. Item W, 2324 Southwest 31st Street, the owner is secured. Item X, 1415 Northwest 34th Street, the owner is secured. On page 26, Item 8E1, Abandoned Housing, Abandoned Buildings. All of these will be stricken from the agenda. Item B, 3500 South Douglas Avenue, the owner is secured. Item C, 11901 North Eckerd Drive, the owner is secured. Item G, 1720 Homer Avenue, the owner is secured. Item H, 1401 North Independence Avenue, the owner is secured. Item L, 1947 West Park Place, the owner is secured. Item N, 1840 Northwest 14th Street, the owner is secured. Item O, 1748 Northeast 18th Street, the owner is secured. On page 27, Item 8E1, Abandoned Buildings Still Continued. Item S, 2324 Southwest 31st Street, the owner is secured. Item T, 1415 Northwest 34th Street, the owner is secured. And that is all the items I have.
All right. Thank you. We have no revocable permits, so we will recess the council meeting and convene at the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have Items A through E that we can take with one motion.
Move the items.
We've got a motion in a second. Go ahead and vote electronically. All right, everybody got it through. And the motion carries unanimously. All right, we will adjourn OCMPFA. Convene at the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have Items A and B we can take with one electronic motion.
Move the items.
We're just, we're just going to do it electronically. No need to move orally. All right, we'll adjourn. I'm sorry. We had the motion in a second. Now, cast your votes. Councilman Cooper and Councilman McAtee. All right, motion carries unanimously. We will now adjourn OCPPA. Convene at the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. We just have claims and payroll item A, but we can go ahead and do a motion on that electronically. And then cast your votes electronically. Motion carries unanimously. We'll adjourn the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Reconvene at the council meeting. We're on Page 3 if you're working off a printed agenda. We're on Item 6, the Consent Docket. And I know that we have a presentation on Item D as in Victor, and Item A, B as in Victor. Are there any other items that a council member wishes to pull out for separate vote or just simply separate discussion?
This is Councilwoman Hammond. I was just hoping or wondering if staff could speak to Item AM and what the, kind of all the, I know it's like a listing of projects. And I just wanted some more information about the process for all of those.
Okay. Any other items? Anyone wishes to pull out for separate discussion or vote?
Yes, Councilwoman Nice. I have, I wanted to also mention AM, but number two, and also Z. D1.
Are you saying V as in Victor?
D as in zebra.
Zebra, got it. All right, thank you. Z1, okay. Anybody else? Okay, here it is now. We'll take the discussions in order, which brings us to Item D as in Victor. First Amendment to Community Development Block Grant. And I believe Kathy O'Connor...
Yes.
Is on the line to speak to that.
This is Kathy O'Connor. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. This item is an amendment to the Community Development Block Grant Agreement between the city and the Oklahoma City Urban Renewal Authority. During this current fiscal year, we've generated some additional program income in the amount of a little bit over $400,000. And we would like to allocate that money to create a microenterprise grant program to assist small businesses of five employees or less that were adversely impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. This program and this funding is in addition to the $5.5 million that was approved by council for the Small Business Continuity Program. The eligibility for the program would, again, include businesses with five or fewer employees. They have to be located either, they have to be located in an urban renewal area, and the, and the owner has to be a low to moderate income person. Or they have to be located in an urban renewal area and in a low to moderate income census tract. So there's, there's two qualifications that are a part of the program. These programs, these funds have a few more restrictions placed on them by the federal government. But again, the grant fund, it is a grant, and it can be used for payroll, occupancy expenses, business equipment, training, technical assistance, and inventory. It can't be used for real property improvements, and it can't be used for expenses that were incurred prior to the final approval of the grant. We will be creating a fillable PDF, getting the word out in those low-income census tracts that also are in urban renewal areas and to low-income business owners about the program and begin to take applications. You know, we, we will have some requirements for documentation, but we are trying to work to be as flexible and make this as easy as possible, understanding that the federal government will have some requirements for participation in the program that are, that are not necessarily the city's requirements, they're HUD's requirements. So with that, I'd be glad to try to answer any questions.
This is Councilwoman Hammond. I'm, so in getting the word out, what does that mean as far as reaching out to businesses? Is it like a targeted mailing or a targeted kind of, like outreach in some way that...
Yeah. Well, I mean, obviously, there's groups that we work with in these various census tracts. So we'll be, you know, working with them and hoping they can help us get the word out through social media and their websites. But we have talked about doing a targeted mailing. We just, we need to do a little bit more research on that and see how effective that really is. You know, obviously, we can't, we're not going to go door to door right now and talk to people, but we are going to try to find some way to, to get the word out.
And so, and then will, will the application, would it be, where would that be hosted? Would it just be online? Or is it just more of a, you need to reach out to a certain office and they'll set you up with the information that they, that you all need?
Well, we'll have it on our website. And then we'll also be able to offer some assistance to people filling out the grant application. There are some requirements by HUD, like they may have to have the suitable or the, what am I trying to say? The, the appropriate business licensing or registration with the Secretary of State. So we're, we're looking into working with organizations like the Community Action Agency to help businesses get those things. And they'll have those whether they qualify for the grant or not. So really trying to work on some of the technical assistance stuff with these businesses because we found that, that that really is a big need.
Yeah. Okay, and well, I've, any opportunity or information that I can help share through my networks as well, I'm happy to help promote it wherever I can. So just let us know.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And we'll certainly, we'll certainly get you the, we'll do a, a marketing toolkit similar to what we did for the small business program and, and get that out.
And this is Councilwoman Nice. And I know I'll probably have questions pertaining to this after we hear the outcome of the Small Business Continuity Program. So I just want to make you aware that I'll probably come back to this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Kathy? We do have a citizen who has signed up to speak on this particular item. So while we're here, I'll call up John Pettis. Mr. Pettis, are you on the line or on video? What, if he's on the phone, can he still be on the phone?
Star six.
Star six, Mr. Pettis, to speak. Okay, we'll move on. We also have Item... Hello, Mr. Pettis? Nope, okay. Item 6, D1. Councilwoman Nice, you wanted to speak to that?
Yes. I, I know we're looking at renewal of contracts is, in, with pertaining to this company in particular, Rudy Construction. But I, I just wanted to make aware of an incident that's, that has occurred in, in the community with one of our businesses that was trying to stay open during the COVID-19 pandemic. And they were, in some aspects, pretty much forced to shut down for a few days. And it was because they were unable to get clarification or information from the construction company to let them, that they were going to be working on their driveway in, in reference to them being able to still hold their business or, or work through trying to figure out how they could maneuver through their other access points of entrance if needed. So I'm, I'm frustrated for this business because, again, with the, with us trying to do Small Business Continuity Program, with us now trying to do this microbusiness enterprise program, we have businesses that are struggling. And especially one of those businesses who had to shut their doors for three days. And they are a restaurant bakery. So we also have folks in the community, if they wanted to get some food directly in the community, they could not do that. So I just wanted to make mention of that. I know they are working through some things to see how they can recoup the, the money that they lost from those three days. But I, I think we should, we should have contracts or construction companies, again, who are mindful of, of the companies or the businesses that they are working around. And we have to create better relationships because this could have been avoided pertaining to this, this business. So I just wanted to make mention of that because, again, that was quite disappointing that the business had no notice and they came to their business seeing that it had been blocked off and they were working on repaving their driveway or the way that people would enter into their business. So I just wanted to put that on, on the record about this particular incident. So I'll stop with that.
And this, this is Craig Freeman. And that, that's certainly something that's a responsibility of our contractors when they're going to have a project that's going to disrupt a business. So we'll look into that.
Thank you.
Okay, Item AM. Councilwoman Hammond wanted to hear staff to speak to the process for all of the items under AM. Why don't we do that first? And then we'll also go to Item AM2 after that for Councilwoman Nice. But Craig, Eric Winger, maybe?
I'm here. Everybody hear me just fine?
Yes.
Okay, so there are a number of items under AM. There's actually 12 total. And I'll probably think it's best probably if I just summarize those in a couple of different categories. Specifically, AM1 is an item to provide additional funding for a bridge maintenance consultant that we work with, with the state of Oklahoma very closely. And so AM1 is a funding allocation to allow us to do that. AM2 is a street resurfacing project. It's actually a joint agreement between Oklahoma City and Oklahoma County. And so this is the project agreement to allow that to happen on Memorial Road between Hiawassee to the city limits. AM3 is a funding allocation to engage a new paving program consultant. This is a consultant that the city would help supplement city staff to further evaluate streets, to help prioritize streets, to support programs like our bond and our Better Streets programs as we navigate through selecting additional streets as we have more funding sources and opportunities present themselves. Item AM4 and the next six items are all pedestrian enhancements that include new sidewalk construction at various locations throughout the city. And these are all listed bond projects that we were successful in submitting to ACOG, the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, for a partnership project. So these six items have a 20% local match, which will realize an overall savings to the city of Oklahoma City since they were already funded as bond program projects. So the funds that are not utilized on those are going to be able to be reappointed to other similar projects at a later date. So that would be Items AM4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. As we get to AM10, we have a 2017 listed sidewalk project that we have an opportunity to expend older bond funds on. So Item AM10 is going to help us complete a sidewalk project on North Ann Arbor using some 2007 monies, even though it is a listed 2017 project, just to help expedite the expenditure of bond funds. And then the last two items are AM11 and AM12. These are some companion items to items previously approved by council, allowing the city of Oklahoma City to make early payment to the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority for two listed projects that are in conjunction with the Kilpatrick Turnpike Extension for the construction widening of South Serra Road. And the two items is one mile of Serra Road from 44th to 59th, and then the other one is from 29th to 44th.
And Eric, all of these items too, they go through our internal review with staff in the city manager's office. But then they go to the Bond Advisory Committee for review when we're doing these allocations as well. And all of these have come through with recommendations from the Bond Advisory Committee as well, right?
Yes.
Thank you. I was kind of curious, particularly with the pedestrian improvements. I know I've heard from people about both the Villa and then the South Blackwelder. So I was just kind of curious what the potential timeline, now that we'll be able to, I guess, partner, it sounds like, with, with ACOG to cover some of those funds. Is it, does that help, is it going to move along, like at a certain timeline now? Or is it just kind of in the same timeline, but now we'll have this, these partnerships?
They'll actually be expedited. So the way the ACOG projects work for Oklahoma City is we actually partner with Oklahoma Department of Transportation to actually do the design and the construction. Though with the council's approval today, ODOT would begin those designs almost immediately. And it's likely that these projects could be bid later this year, the fall of 2020, meaning that work would then begin soon after and likely be completed in 2021. And that would apply to all six sidewalk projects.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Excuse me. This might be a good time as well to mention 8A1 and 4. I just want to say thank you to everybody involved in securing the funds to deal with these two pedestrian improvements toward two. One of them shows up in AM. But we're looking at pedestrian improvements on the curve from Northwest Expressway over to Placent Boulevard. And I, that's critical in terms of connectivity to all of the businesses that, you know, are there on North Clay or through... And then the other one really excited about is going to be on North Portland Avenue from Northwest 63rd Street to Northwest 50th Street, as well as Northwest 50th Street from Portland, and then heading east to North Villa Avenue. That, that's, that's really wonderful because the people who live in Mayfair Heights and their west and the surrounding neighborhoods around 50th Street, that, that's going to be really important. As we all know, just a little bit further east of Villa in the next several months, years, will be the new Oak Development there at 10 and, and 50th Street. So that sidewalk pedestrian connectivity is just critical. So I just really love everyone for, for getting us here. So thank you.
This is Larry. Eric, I'd like to thank you for your work on Ann Arbor and also on Serra Road. Both of these are key projects in Ward 3. And thank you and your staff for the efforts that you've done to move this forward.
You're very welcome.
Councilwoman Nice, do you want to speak to Item AM2 over here?
I can. As we already heard, we're looking at the approval of the project for East Memorial Road and North Hiawassee Road to the city limit. So I just wanted to make mention of that. The, obviously, the approval in, the resurfacing is coming. We've had a lot of folks call in and ask for, for this to be done. So your, your wish has been granted upon this approval by our city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I guess we also now have Item A, V as in Victor, for a presentation from Mark Cranenberg with Airport.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Manager, Mark Cranenberg, Airport's Director. Item AV, this item is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Airport Trust that approved the resolution last Thursday, April 23rd. The resolution authorizes the submission of grant applications to obtain funding from the Federal Aviation Administration under the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, or commonly known as the CARES Act. As everyone is aware, the commercial airline industry has been severely impacted by the virus and the public health emergency. And consequently, commercial service airports in particular have also been impacted with passenger activity down more than 95%, affecting numerous airline activity-related revenue categories. The funds are intended to support continued airport operations, keep airports safe, reliable, serving the aviation industry, the traveling public, also supporting the economy, keeping aviation workers employed, and very important to keep airport credit ratings stable. The FAA's Office of Airports has already announced amounts that eligible airports will receive. And cumulatively, the Airport Trust is anticipated to receive just under $22 million. These funds are intended to be used as airport revenues. And as such, the Airport Trust is planning to use the funds to pay down the debt service for fiscal year 2021 and pay operating expenses for fiscal year '20 and fiscal year 2021. Request your approval.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark on this item?
May I ask? I don't know, it's not necessarily the, going to affect my vote in terms of approval of the item. But what are you hearing right now in terms of the industry and what getting, getting back to something called good is going to look like for airports?
Thank you for the question. That is a huge unknown at this time. I can tell you, the, the industry is anticipating a slow comeback, probably one to two years. As we go forward, we're anticipating... As we go forward, we're anticipating our revenues in those airline activity-related categories to come back at best about 75% of what they were before this crisis began. And so it's all going to depend on how quickly I think the public has confidence to fly and how well the airlines will continue to respond to the demand.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mark? Okay, I believe that concludes all the items on the consent docket that anybody wanted to speak about. I would entertain a motion electronically, of course. We've got a motion in a second. Cast your vote on the items on the consent docket. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item seven, the concurrent docket, we have items A through S we can take with one motion. We've got a... What's going on? I didn't even vote, but somehow I voted.
I think you still have the last one up.
Well, it says concurrent.
That's weird.
Okay. Can click bring up concurrent docket motion again? Okay. All right, we've got a motion in a second. Now vote on the concurrent docket. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item eight, items requiring separate votes. Item A1 was deferred. Item A2 was deferred. Item A3 is at 5012 South Byers Avenue going from R1 to R3. Councilman Stone, and I'm looking at a, hold on one second, I'm just looking at a stack of yellow sheets here to make sure that nobody has signed up for this item. No one has. Councilman Stone, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that was passed unanimously by the Planning Commission. It's to permit a triplex area of 50th and South Byers. And unless there's any questions, I would move for approval.
Okay, actually, you know, in this case, if you would, well, somebody already beat you to it. You've got a second. Again, the vote just was cast without anyone voting. I voted on this item. Here we go. Councilman Cooper, Councilman Stone, would you like to vote? All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, item 8A4, 137 Southeast 27th Street going from R2 to R3. Councilwoman Knight, and it looks like the applicant has signed up to speak. So, but that's it. Councilwoman Knight, the floor is yours.
Okay, we'll allow the applicant to speak if that's...
Okay. Kendall and Crafton Toll, I don't know, kind of written kind of odd. I'm not sure if it's two people or one person. Anyone on this item who, Kendall or Crafton? Okay, well, never mind then. Councilwoman Knight?
Okay. Just as you heard, here's another triplex. It's just going in Ward seven. So other than this, I don't see of any protests, so I will move for approval. Although, wait a minute.
You wouldn't mind doing that electronically? All right, we've got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, item 8A5, 3900 South Kenny Road from AA to RA. Councilman Stone and Councilman Stone, David Box is here for the applicant if you would like to hear from him.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for a small development. Looks like most of the law will be on average size. It's approved by the Planning Commission. It's bordered to the north by the exact same kind of development. Unless if anyone has any questions, I would certainly move for approval.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind doing that electronically, which you have, thank you. Now everybody cast your votes. Councilman McAtee. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, item 8A6 was deferred, which brings us to 8A7, 11100 West Memorial Road going from PUD 1464 to PUD 1756. Councilman Greiner, and nobody has signed up to speak on this item.
Cool, this is an existing R1 PUD. The new PUD just adjusts some of the requirements, but it's still an R1. Planning Commission voted on it to approve it unanimously, and there hasn't been any protest. So unless there's any questions, I'll move for approval.
Okay. We've got a motion in a second. Everyone cast your vote. All right, motion passes unanimously. Item 8A8 at 10500 Broadway Extension going from PUD 655 to SPUD 1127. Councilwoman Knight, and there are three different people who've signed up to speak as protesters, and then obviously David Box is also representing the applicant. But first to you, Councilwoman Knight.
Okay. This is in some aspects a stringly complicated PUD turning into a spud. So I'll allow David Box to speak, and then I would like to hear from those who have signed up in opposition, please.
All right, David Box?
Yes. Yeah. Okay. Fox 22, Call Corvus Drive. This is an SPUD at Broadway Extension in Hefner. It is an SPUD that would do primarily two things. It would add commercial uses that are not otherwise allowed today, and it would add one element of a non-accessory sign. The non-accessory sign is very similar to the seven or eight cases that have recently come through, both Planning Commission, City Council. I believe this is the eighth one that I have personally been involved in, and perhaps there are others. And so this is at an area along 235 where signs are very prevalent. I drove it yesterday just to count for myself. In between Northwest 50th and Hefner Road, which is where this sign is, there were 11 billboards. 10 of those 11 are Lamar billboards. Specifically, the subject site is sandwiched between two separate Lamar billboards, one on the north, one on the south. The billboard that we seek today does meet all state and local requirements in terms of spacing. As you're aware now, the spacing requirements are 1,000 foot for state and 1,200 foot for city. I do want to note before Mr. Hickman gets on, I find his position in this particular case to be troubling. At best, Mr. Hickman was my co-council of sorts on an identical application immediately west of 235. So Hefner and 235 on the west side of the road, Mr. Hickman helped me get approved, spud 1110. That has an approval date from City Council of May 7, 2019. And he certainly didn't believe that it to be illegal back last May when Mr. Hickman helped me get approved that spud. There is nothing different about this spud. It's the same type of spud that Mr. Hickman and I together worked to get approved for Griffin Communication. So what my client is asking is for the same treatment that all the other applicants have received up and down Broadway Extension. It was recommended for approval both by staff and by the Planning Commission. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, let's move forward to those who have signed up to speak, please.
Okay. We have Bright Ward. And Bright, if you're on your phone, dial star six to unmute yourself. Okay, how about William Hickman? Or Bill Condon? Go ahead.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, William Hickman here, Legal Counsel for Lamar Alder Advertising. You guys have heard us make our objections before to the use of spuds and puds to circumvent the sign code requirements. This is a similar case to the multiple ones that have proceeded. This one in particular, I'd just like to point out that spud 1127 does seek to add a new 50-foot tall digital billboard in a location that is otherwise not legal. Box indicated that this meets all state and local requirements. That is not exactly accurate, otherwise they would not be here asking for a zoning change to allow this billboard to be built at this site. So let's be clear, but for the city's actions to rezone this property, this billboard would not be legal at this location. Therefore, spud 1127 would allow a new billboard to be added to the city's inventory that would otherwise not be allowed. That is in direct conflict with the city's comprehensive long-term plan, Plan OKC, which is intended to restrict and reduce the number of billboard structures in the community. Number two, the city's ordinance regarding the appropriate use of puds and spuds in 1590 dash 41003 clearly says that spuds and puds are not to be used to circumvent the other policies and ordinances of the city behind the city. Clearly, this is an attempt to circumvent those other, the restrictions in the sign code and allow billboard sign at a location that would otherwise not be lawful. For those reasons, we would respectfully request that the city deny this spud and that the city would place an immediate moratorium in effect to prohibit the continued use of the spud and pud ordinances to circumvent the sign ordinance code to allow more billboards. Just as a quick aside, I want to comment and say that this request and these objections by Lamar have absolutely nothing to do with any kind of competition in the marketplace. And Mr. Box's continued efforts to make it an issue by commenting on the number of Lamar signs in the area is completely irrelevant to whether or not this body should approve this zoning request. Each zoning application, you've heard from your own legal counsel, should stand on its own. And the fact that there are other billboard signs in this area, whether owned by Lamar or others, has nothing to do with whether or not this location is appropriate for a billboard. The, one of the only reasons this spud application is before you, as Mr. Box has stated, is to act a non-accessory sign. And as your staff report indicates, there's nothing specific in this indicating what the proposed development is going to be. And therefore, we would again urge our request that you deny this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There is one more, Councilman Knight, that Bill Condon's on the line.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me, Bill Condon?
Hi, Bill. Go ahead, yes, I can hear you.
Going Lamar Advertising, 123 North 50th. A question regarding that report on page number five, 6.3. It does speak to the pole shall be covered with materials consistent with the building located on the subject site. So is there going to be a building located on there so that would match up accordingly to the subject site?
Is the question for David Box, perhaps?
Yeah, I can answer that.
Yes.
Yeah, this is David Box. So yeah, there will be a commercial development that will be developed here on this site in addition to the billboard.
Okay, because it also goes into speaking to not having exposed metal and the common billboard obviously is a metal monopole. I was just curious to see how it was going to remain consistent with future buildings.
Yeah, so the exposed metal comment relates to the buildings that will be developed on the site.
Okay. And then also, Mr. Mayor, just a question for you. The focus group that we're a part of tomorrow that's going to take a deeper dive in this entire process, I know in other markets I've worked in that when, when there's a deeper dive review of the actual code specifically as it relates, in this case, puds and spuds, is the city going to continue to hear cases of spuds and puds as it relates to non-accessory as the topic or the issue is being reviewed by staff and stakeholders?
So you posed a question to me, I guess, just to clarify, in our form of government, I don't have unilateral authority, so I would maybe defer to the city manager to suggest what a course of action that refers to what you're talking about.
That is the intent right now, is we will continue as we are. I know that the issue has been raised, whether or not we could put a moratorium in place. This is something we can have our legal staff look at. If we would have a moratorium on non-accessory signs, that's something we can do. I had some discussion with our attorneys this morning, and that's something they can evaluate if it's a desire of the council to do that. Right now, our plan is to continue on because circumstances haven't really changed. So our plan was to continue on with this process as we were going through the review.
Mayor Mark Stonecypher here. Last week, James Cooper and I met with our consultant that's working on several different things, but in particular, billboards. And his name is Mark White. He's out of Kansas City, very informative, very productive meeting. We had Kenny and Susan in attendance from Legal, and we discussed several different options, including the option of a moratorium. And that's something Legal's taking a look at, and we will be getting back to everybody pretty quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, one last try. Bright Ward, are you there? Okay, Councilwoman Knight?
Thank you. With this, I think it is, in my opinion, it's quite frustrating when we have to go through this when we're trying to figure out what to do next. And I think even with Mr. Box explaining there are already 11 signs on Broadway Extension proves the fact that it's saturated on Broadway Extension with signage and billboards. I understand. Explain to me, if you will, though, why the TE was deleted and what that conversation was as far as the Planning Commission meeting occurred.
Absolutely. Are you talking about TE number one, Councilwoman?
Correct.
So there was a, a couple members of the Planning Commission that based upon the size of the property believed that we probably needed two separate freestanding accessory signs because we could have two sizable buildings built on the site. If the TE number one gives you pause, we're happy to amend accordingly. But that was a request by two of the Planning Commission members to delete the TE.
Do we know exactly what the use will be? I understand what we, as far as this spud is, but are we confident that we know to be placed on this, on this piece of property?
No, we don't know an end use.
Um, no, we don't know an end user. I mean, we're, we're confident that it will be some sort of commercial development. It has been zoned in a manner for quite some time that my client has owned it and has trouble being able to market it. And so the idea was to add some commercial uses that can make this more marketable, but we don't have an end user at the moment. It, it's difficult without the proper entitlements to be able to market that to end users.
And I understand there were some requirements to make sure that there was not an impact to the neighborhood or the neighbors that are behind. Will you explain that as well?
Yes, one of the individuals on the Planning Commission works for a sign company, and he has suggested on this, as well as many others that have come through recently, you'll notice, these light directing louvers. And what these do is it basically shields the ability to see the sign but for the traffic on the highway. So if you aren't on the, the angle that is created by being on the highway, you won't be able to see this, the message. And so it's just light directing louvers that's helped direct the message to the highway and not the adjoining properties. And so we agreed to that limitation in the spud.
With that, let's, I would not, I want to take one of those signs because I just feel like that's way too many signs that we're doing. I think you're getting, the fifty-foot billboard is already too many, but to add to a couple more signs, let's take that and just keep the one and go forward with, but I'm reluctantly approving this. And so I do ask that we consider putting a moratorium sooner than later on this process because as you see, we're going to continue to get these pushed through while this is being discussed, and there's pretty much not a lot of repercussions from that. So I'm asking for those who are committee or this, this discussion for a possible moratorium, that we probably put one in place as soon as possible so we won't have a flood of these conversations coming through before we can put a pause on it to say no. So with that, I'd like to amend this with, I want to move to amend to take out the limit, well, I want to limit to one of the accessory signs, and we'll, we'll amend this for that and then we'll approve it from there. So.
Okay, so there's a motion to amend this, which has been, we're considering what's on the screen electronically as the motion for an amendment.
Yes.
Okay, and that has been seconded, and so once it opens up, and cast your votes on the amendment. Councilwoman Cooper, have you voted?
Here it is.
All right, amendment passed unanimously. Now we're back on the item, Councilwoman Knight, as amended.
Now I'd like to move for approval, and I'll put it on when it comes up, oh.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Cast your vote. All right, that one went fast. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item eight, A nine. This is one-one-one-eight and one-one-three-zero, Northwest Sixteenth Street, going from R-three and O-one to S U D-one-one-seven-four. Councilwoman Hammond, there is someone, I believe it's the applicant, and he says he's ready to speak, just in case you need him. I don't think he needs to if you don't need it.
Okay, thank you. No, I, I, we communicated via text or email yesterday, so this is a, a development along Sixteenth Street, just east of the Plaza District. That would be a, a mixed-use development with, with kind of a general office use as kind of the, or, or one of the opportunities. They, I know in Planning Commission, they amended some of the TEs, just in case there is an opportunity for the, there to be drinking or eating establishments with outdoor seating to minimize any impact on the residential area around the, the development. So if it's live on Prime Gov, I will move for approval. There we go.
All right, moved and seconded, cast your vote. Passed unanimously. Item eight, A-ten is at one-one-one zero, Northwest Seventy-Ninth, going from R-one to S U D-one-one-seven-eight. Councilman Cooper, and no one has signed up.
I believe the applicant or the representative, the applicant or the representative, am I correct?
I'm here, yeah.
Would you mind giving a few requests, please? One is, could you describe your proposal and describe the existing structures that were, that are already present on Northwest Seventy-Ninth and how you see your proposal fitting in on that street? And what the, and thirdly, what the process has been in terms of conversations with neighbors and people within the, the area, please?
Yeah, so we've, currently, there's two empty lots there, and both of those lots are separated by sewer line easement, and they've never been developed. They're a residential neighborhood, houses that were built in the old fifties and sixties. And so we're proposing, really, the reason that we did a spud was we, the, the owner would like to be able to do a, an in-law unit, an actual in-law unit, to be able to house parents coming to visit, you know, children and things like that, because he's got family from all over the country coming in and things like that. So he had bought the lot next door with the idea of developing both of them and selling one and then using the proceeds from that to then develop the other lot to build his own home. So he went into this not with the idea of, you know, developing it to make a ton of money or do anything like that, but really just to build a home for himself. And one of the neighbors, I guess, kind of was concerned that, that this was going to somehow drive his property value down. And so he got a little riled up and got some other neighbors concerned, and then we got, Janice Powers came to a meeting with us and was able to kind of mediate a lot of that, and, and we were able to work a lot of that out with the neighborhood. So ultimately, what we agreed to was, well, really, we agreed to, in developing all of this, we agreed to, really just to communicate with the neighborhood and make sure that they, that we weren't going to do anything crazy. That's really, they just want to make sure we weren't going to build some giant eyesore or something like that. I think that that was the biggest concern, and that, that it wasn't going to be like apartments. I think they thought we were going to come in and put in an apartment building, which was why we were rezoning, but, and the reality is that we're putting in two single-family homes with detached in-law units was the possi, was the possibility that we wanted. That's why we wanted to rezone it, for more marketability in being able to resell the lots.
Thank you. Would you mind, this might sound abstract, but I'm very curious why this particular street, this particular area, and word two for the applicant, why, why, why take this approach and why there?
So these two particular lots are, the way that they're set up with the easements, they're really challenging, and that's why these two lots had never been developed. And so they came at a really affordable price, and that was honestly the biggest, the biggest reason. I mean, they are, the adjacency to Nichols Hills is nice, but the, and the area is, you know, Northwest Seventy-Ninth is on the edge of some area that needs a little bit of revitalization. It could certainly use it, but it's also on the edge of some, some areas that have some nicer, newer homes, there's some new development down the street. So it is a good location, but primarily it was just that the lots were a great price, and no one else had developed them because they're just too challenging. And he was willing to take the challenge on, so. I mean, I think once you account for the easements, the buildable area on one of the lots is like twenty-four feet wide or something like that, like, I'd have to look at my site plan, but they're, it's, they're very narrow. So that was, that was the primary reason.
Thank you. Would you mind describing, I've received a letter of protest from ONG, and I'm, I'd like to hear from you to describe what your experiences have been with ONG and why you believe you've received this protest and what you plan to do to address it. And then, if possible, City Manager Freeman, I'd like to hear from Bob Teener to hear more about this ONG protest and what the applicant can do to address it. But first, I'd like to hear a little bit more from the applicant's representative about their experiences with ONG, please.
Okay, so ONG, most of the utilities, most of the franchise utilities have contacts for us to get ahold of them. ONG requires us to go through their eight-hundred number, and so when they send us a letter, there's no one to get ahold of. And so we've had, it's been impossible to get ahold of someone at Oklahoma Natural Gas to resolve the issue with the letter that they sent. I think that the letter that they sent was probably just kind of a standard issue letter in regards to them having an easement adjacent to the property. We're not going to build on the easement, obviously, we can't build over the easement, but what we can do is we can pave over the easement if ever they have to do any work in that easement. It would be at the owner's expense to have to replace the paving. You know, we're willing to do a permeable paving solution or whatever they would require or whatever the city would require to be, to be able to pave over that gas line to gain access to the rear of the property. So, so we're totally willing to do that, but the, our thought was we could go down to the city today and get a driveway permit and easily pave over that. So I don't know really what effect the, the letter that ONG sent would really have, because that's really all we're doing with their easement is paving part of it, just to be able to access the property. So I do wish it was a little bit easier to get ahold of a representative with ONG, for sure. But, but that's been, that's been the experience on our part with Oklahoma Natural Gas.
Do you know if Bob Teener is with us right now?
This is Bob Teener, Development Services Director. He's correct that, that that was a standard letter from ONG, but during the building permit process, we'll confirm that there's no structure built over that easement, and there really shouldn't be any problems. That's pretty typical. So I don't, I don't think there'd be a problem with her being able to get her permit as long as she stays off, out of the easement, off the gas line.
Yeah, so thank you, Bob, and thank you for addressing my, my questions. My, my only remaining concern is with some of the protest signatures I received in regards to this application. However, those, those seem to be more out of a fear of something new coming in and destroying the, the character of the neighborhood with, I think there's kind of a bit of a fear of like big, giant, multi-use apartments or something like this, and I don't see that this with this project. It sounds like the applicant themselves is actually going to be residing on Northwest Seventy-Ninth Street.
Yeah, yeah.
And I really, someone showing that willingness. So, and this was approved unanimously by our Planning Commission, including, as you noted, word two, Planning Commissioner Janice Powers. And I'm sure you all will continue to work with Development Services to address the utilities concerns, and with that, I would move for approval. Where is that? There we go.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the item. Cast your vote. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Item eight, A-eleven was deferred, eight, A-twelve was deferred, brings us to eight, A-thirteen, thirty-four-one, Northwest Twenty-third Street, going from C-one to S U D-twelve-hundred. Councilman Cooper, the applicant has signed up to speak.
Well, let's hear from the applicant, shall we?
Evan W. King.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm actually Ms. Dawson's attorney, and I, I signed up only if you had any questions regarding the application.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilman Cooper?
Thank you. Would you mind describing what your intentions are in this particular area, please?
Say that again, you kind of broke up a little bit.
Sure. Would you mind describing the, describing the intentions for the area, please, what you're planning to do with this S U D?
Okay. Essentially, we're asking the council to approve the S U D based upon the grounds that Ms. Dawson's property is currently zoned as C-one, and that only allows for office and doesn't allow for retail. The applicant is an owner of a dispensary, and because of the restriction of it only being zoned as C-one, they can't operate a medical marijuana dispensary there. The surrounding area is, does include C-three, and that's what we are asking. It be zoned in accordance with or similar to is C-three, which does permit retail services. Additionally, the application includes a, an element of office use as well. Essentially, the surrounding area has a laundromat surrounding it, it has a, I believe there's a taco place right next to it, as well as other various retail establishments and food establishments.
I, I hope and pray that Hugo's crockery is still there. In fact, that is one of my.
I believe it is.
Okay, praise be, that's wonderful. Yeah, and the only, only other thing I would say to you and the applicant is I have my eye on that stretch there, honestly, from Twenty-third and Meridian, the Windsor District, and better connecting that with pedestrian and bike infrastructure and just beautification to the urban core, to the OCU corridor. And so my, my only request is, you know, thinking about what responsible stewardship of that, that area looks like. So it looks like every, it was approved by our Planning Commission, so I would move approval.
So we're looking for an electronic motion and second, which we now have. Cast your vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, eight, A-fourteen is at one-one-three-three-zero, North Main, Sweet B and C, going from O-two to S U D-twelve-on-one. Councilman Cooper, the applicant has signed up to speak, but only Councilman Cooper, the applicant has signed up to speak, but only if there are questions.
Yes. My question would be if the applicant wouldn't mind describing their intentions with this particular, as well, please.
Okay, M. Joyce Cobb?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, thank you. This property is a currently zoned O2. There are, it's a small building with three suites. The Suite A was previously, some time ago, rezoned for commerce, for retail use. We're asking to now allow, not change, but leave O2, but only to include also retail sales in Suites B and C.
And? Anything else?
And I just, we just not bring your approval.
It looks like it's got the approval of our Planning Commission, and with that, I would move approval as well, which I think I can do on the street.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, this brings us to 8A15 at 9100 Northwest Expressway, going from R1 and PUD 1122 to SPOD 1202. Councilman Greiner, the applicant has signed up to speak, Mr. Charles Allen.
Cool. I, I do have a question for him. So, this is just a mixed-use spud. It's got a C3 base, had a Planning Commission unanimous approval. The only question I have of him, and I think I know the answer, but I just want to make sure that the connection to the south, to the residential neighborhood, is, I think the spud says that it's for emergency use only, and it's going to have a crash gate there. I just want to make sure that I'm reading that right, because if that was an actual connection where traffic's going to be going through there all the time, it would be a really bad idea. So, so yeah, that's my question to the applicant.
Okay, is Charles Allen on the line? And to remind you, if you are muted, push star six.
Bob might, Bob Teener might be able to answer that question also.
Okay. Bob, you're invited as well.
Yeah, this, this is Bob Teener, excuse me. Technical evaluation number four was added, and that clarifies that it's a crash gate, but there will be pedestrian access allowed. So that was part of the Planning Commission recommendation. They added a technical evaluation.
He is online, if you can tell him, just star six.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Charles Allen? The clerk says you're on the line. All right, Councilman Greiner?
Well, I, I think I'm good with Bob's explanation, so I'll move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 8A16 is at 3224 Northeast 23rd Street, going from C3 to SPOD 1203. Councilwoman Knight, no one has signed up to speak.
Okay. And this is just to allow a track of this establishment to be residential. And I have crossed this area frequently, and it is a gated area. So, with that, I'll move for approval. Oh, never mind, I got it.
All right, there's a motion in a second. Cast your vote. Passes unanimously. 8B1, this is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval closing a right-of-way east of South Walker, between West I-240 and Southwest 79th. Councilman Greenwell, I guess is not with us today. Is there anybody else? Councilman Stone, you want to take this one?
Yeah, I can, Mayor. This is an application to close an easement there behind Live Church. There's nothing constructed on that easement. The public street was never constructed there, and this will allow them to connect to parcels. So when it comes up, I will move for approval.
Okay. I guess we'll go ahead and consider that done. We've got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. 8B2 is a resolution establishing a date for enactment of said ordinance and determining those, determining those entitled to notice. I take it this is-
Mayor, that's on an error.
Oh, okay.
It can just be stricken. You can order it be stricken.
I can order it be stricken. All right, this was an error. This item is not in order, and it is stricken, 8B2, okay? 8C1, this is the public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed. Let's see. Does not appear that anyone has signed up to speak. Nevertheless, I will pause for a few seconds for anyone who wishes to weigh in on this public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed at 8C1.
I have one as far as 2121 North Latte. I did receive a message from the owner of this property asking that his property be removed from dilapidated. So, I would like to defer this, so I can actually speak with him further or I can get some clarification as to what the conversations have been with this, with this owner.
Okay. So that's a motion for deferral to the next council meeting?
That's correct.
Okay. Here a second. Got a motion in a second. Go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. All right, we're back on the item of 8C1, except for 8C1B, which has been deferred. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak under this public hearing? I'll pause for a few seconds here. Okay, hearing none. I entertain a motion for the resolution found in 8C2 declaring that the structures are dilapidated. We've got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, 8D1 is the public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed. No one has signed up to speak. But I'll pause for a few seconds if anyone wants to jump in under this public hearing. Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adopt a resolution found in 8B2 declaring that the structures are unsecured. Looks like we have a motion in a second. Go ahead and cast your votes. Okay, motion carried. So, we had a person who had signed up to speak on an earlier item. I assume that, that he is supportive, it's not clear, but is Michael Judd on the line still? All right, fair enough, we will move on then. All right, we just approved item 8D2. Now we'll move on to 8E1. This is the public hearing regarding the abandoned building here listed, except for those stricken at the beginning of the meeting. No one has signed up to speak, but I'll pause for a few seconds if anybody wants to jump in. Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found in 8E2 declaring that the buildings are abandoned. Looks like we have that motion in a second, so go ahead and cast your vote. Okay, motion passes unanimously. 8F is a resolution extending salary continuation benefits for injured city employees currently in the workers' compensation program impacted by the Governor's fourth amended executive order related to the COVID-19 pandemic. There a motion on this item, or any questions or discussion? Looks like we've got a motion in a second. Go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. 8G1, I don't believe we need executive session, is a resolution authorizing Sherri Katz and Katie Goff to represent and defend city employee Wade Gorley in the case of Washington v. City of OKC. There a motion on this item? Got a motion in a second. Go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. 8H1, I don't believe we need, item two, the executive session. 8H1 is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, authorizing Collins, Zorn, and Wagner to represent municipal employees and Oklahoma City Police Officers Mitchell McCoy, Wade Spence, Justin Reynolds, Aaron Richards, and George Goff in the case style of Washington v. City of OKC. Got a motion coming in a second. Cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. 8I1, claims recommended for denial. There are two here, don't believe we need executive session. No one has signed up to speak. Or have they? Yes, actually. Matthew Carney, are you there?
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay, I appreciate everybody's time and my inconcise thoughts on this matter. I understand that the city can't look after or, you know, be responsible for every third-party contractor, and I, I respect that. But I did a lot of work. I tried to go through the insurance of the subcontractor. Everything took literally months. It took a month to track down the primary contractor. It took a month to track down the, their subcontractor, and then their insurance agent, and then their agent, so on and so forth. And once I finally did get ahold of their insurance, I was literally told, unless I had a picture of the dangerous conditions with no one there to stop the, my claim would be denied. I mean, if I was, thought it was dangerous enough that it warranted taking a picture of the conditions, no one there to stop me driving through said conditions, I obviously never would have driven through them. My question is, just, honestly, I just feel stuck. I, I know that, you know, law says that you can't be responsible for that, but on my end, I, I honestly, I just don't know what to do. And this was more just a plea for some kind of guidance on what to do in the matter as someone that doesn't really understand a, a lot of these processes.
Hey, Matthew, this is Todd Stone, your city councilman.
Yes, Mr. Stone.
If, if you don't mind, I'm going to go ahead and recommend this for the denial today. But I will reach out to you and see if we can't get this resolved through other means.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm sure you're, were you, did you see any details of the case at all by chance?
I don't have a whole lot of details, but I can tell you, I drive down the Sooner Road almost every day. So, I know exactly what area you're talking about there. And so, like I said, we're going, we're going to, I'll recommend them go ahead and deny this through the city, but I will reach out to you personally and see if we can't resolve it through other means.
Okay, I would, I would appreciate that. I documented everything as thoroughly as I can be. I have plenty of pictures, and, and I can tell you all the steps that I've taken so far. When I filed the claim with the city, it was kind of my Hail Mary. I thought I tried everything that I could think of so far, tracking down all the contractors, the subcontractors, and even their insurance. So, I, I do appreciate your offer to reach out, and it would be welcome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so that was the only person who had signed up to speak under item 8I1, claims recommended for denial. Would anyone like to make a motion? Got a motion in a second. Go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. 9A1, claim recommended for approval. There's one here. We do not need executive session. No one has signed up to speak. We can go ahead and pick a motion. Got a motion in a second. Go ahead and cast your votes. Little bit of a lag here, waiting for the results to come through. There we go, motion carries unanimously. All right, now we're at items from council. We'll start with the listed item before we go around the invisible horseshoe. We'll start with 10A. This was an ordinance on final hearing related to the zoning and planning code. I know it specifically relates to small cell towers. This was deferred from April 28th. Councilwoman Knight, you want to start us off?
Yes, again, this is on final hearing, and I just wanted to make mention. I know we, when we initially presented this, we had a group of visitors that were talking about 5G and small towers. And even with that, I wanted to emphasize from our last council meeting of the conversation that we received as far as when, when it comes to 5G, even of putting a moratorium on that now during COVID-19 crisis, that as a municipal council, that's something we are not able to do due to the state deeming that it is allowable for a 5G small towers to continue to be built or, or prepared. So, again, this is just us to now make sure it goes in the correct hands. Not to say the city council wasn't the correct hands, but just to now go through the process of board of adjustment. So, I'm just going to ask for an approval on this.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously.
Do we need the emergency mayor?
I don't know. Do we, do we need that, do we need the, we haven't heard since you did. Okay, we have not heard your death notice. Okay, we will now go around the horseshoe, and we'll just go in order. We'll start with Ward 1.
I don't have anything today, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilman Cooper?
Yes, thank you. First, I would like to invite everyone to First Friday. Yes, thank you, first, I would like to invite everyone to First Friday, this Friday, May 1st, from home, the Paseo Arts District is hosting a virtual First Friday. As many of you are already aware, and for those of you who are not, the First Friday of every month at Paseo, which is, as I've said previously, our city's first commercial district built outside of downtown, celebrating its centennial in fact this decade. We host a First Friday Art Walk of our galleries, and of our restaurants, and of our bars, our shops, First Friday of the month, and this month won't be different, except for that we're gonna be doing it from our screens, and I really want to applaud the leadership in the Paseo for for doing just a little bit of a tweak on tradition, but doing what they can to keep us safe. They have done everything they can over the last several decades to revitalize this historic part of our city. So, and again, you can go on Facebook, and you can see more about that event there on the Paseo Arts District's Facebook page. From there, I'd like to speak a bit more about Oklahoma City and COVID-19 and our way forward. As you all know, I teach at Oklahoma City University and at the University of Central Oklahoma right now, as I'm on leave of absence from teaching middle school on the south side of our city. And I'm grading papers, it's been an adjustment, we've been online instead of in the classroom, I'm very, very proud of the students at OCU and UCO for being with me through that transition. I mention that because the essays I'm grading have reminded me that thesis statements are important, and we should start at the beginning with naming a problem, and then body paragraph by body paragraph by body paragraph lay out the solutions to that problem. So I'd like to share with you the problem. The problem, as I understand it, I think PBS put out a documentary, Frontline, award-winning series, Frontline is of course, they put out a new documentary, some of you might have already seen it, on the coronavirus, for those of you who haven't, you can Google it, PBS Frontline Coronavirus. It's brief, it's an hour, and it'll walk you through the beginning of the pandemic to our present moment. And here's the problem as I understand it, as we go forward as a city, as a state, as a country. Miles O'Brien, the investigative reporter, he interviews Chris Murray, who might be a familiar name to many of you, Chris Murray runs the Institute for Health Metrics and Evaluation at the University of Washington, and the reason why he might be familiar to you is because his models, his scientific models are the ones that President Trump's Corona Task Force uses, and so you've probably seen them during the recent press briefings at the White House. So Miles O'Brien interviews Mr. Murphy, and Murray, excuse me, and this was the question that Miles had for him. He said, quote, "So really, when you think about it, Chris, there is no scenario of going forward that you can envision that doesn't demand mass testing, if not testing for everyone." The response from Mr. Murray, a PhD director there at the University of Washington IHME, is as follows, quote, "The issue will be capacity to test. How many tests are practically feasible come June, state by state? And it may not be anywhere near enough to be able to do full-scale mass testing. So then, if you take measures off May 1st, this Friday, there's a pretty quick rebound. So by mid-July, we'd be right back where we are now." And then I'm gonna shift back to Miles O'Brien, quote, "Really? Exactly the rate of death and hospitalization we're dealing with?" Now back to Chris Murray, "Pretty much, yeah. So we're not going to want to take off measures May 1st, let's put it that way." So, first, I would like for our city council to consider what Mr. Murray has said, and what I'm gonna ask then, the thesis, the problem, is mass testing. The problem is that even though the Paseo is gonna have a virtual art walk this Friday, and again, I applaud those efforts, too many of our people are afraid right now. They're afraid to go back to our restaurants, they're afraid to go out, and I think we as a council could move forward to help them be less afraid, and I think the way we do that is by, and I would love to author it, and I will going into the next council meeting, but I'd like to author a resolution, but ask in the spirit of fellowship, all of our council members, including our mayor, to consider joining me in that resolution, and that resolution could be one that we send to our federal government, where we ask them, as Congress drafts its next Corona economic relief package, that we ask them to do six action items, you've heard me speak to them before, but I would very much like to see them in a resolution. The first action item would be, and anyone following at home, grab a pencil, grab a pen, or whatever technology you have to take notes, but I think these six action items are the way that we can undo the fear that is in our people. I don't like people afraid, even though I love horror movies, I don't like people afraid. So I think number one is mass testing, I'd like to see our federal government step up its manufacturing and distribution of testing, where daily, we're talking anywhere from 500,000 tests to upwards to five to seven million tests, that's what I'm hearing from Harvard. So I'd like to see that, so that we can also begin the process of contact tracing. So let's say that by summer reopening, this would be a way to make sure that as people are going back out into the marketplace, they feel comfortable knowing that we have enough tests out there to immediately test everyone and trace anyone with whom they've come in contact with if they should test positive for the virus. Despite what we hear from the White House podium, we simply do not have that level of testing right now. That's not my opinion, that's what's there in the Frontline documentary, that's what we're hearing from most health experts, and if we took that approach, which is what Germany did, what South Korea did, they feel their people feel much more comfortable opening up after that period of testing and then having that test, so I would like to see council include one of its six items of a request to our federal government as Congress and the White House work to craft its next economic relief package, a serious investment in mass testing, both the production and the distribution. So that's the first answer to our thesis, to our problem right now. The second is also from the Frontline documentary, and I just want to quote from some of our first responders, and much, much love to our first responders, this is from Ryan Kay, who's MD Medical Director, the emergency department there in Seattle, I believe, he says, quote, "It's exhausting to constantly think about the sequence that you put things on, take things off, and when you're sanitizing during that sequence, every nurse, every tech, every physician I've talked to has said, quote, 'I've been working for years, and I've never been so exhausted, and it leaves people just on edge all the time. We have enough N95 masks, people should not be able to, we should not have to bring in our own mask at this point in time, and that's what's happening.'" So, I think the second answer that I'd like to see in a city council resolution would be from the federal government, an increased production and distribution of the personal protective equipment, including N95 masks, that our first responders would need to be able to administer these tests. I also want to be clear on some things, I think there's a little bit of confusion, I include myself, I was a bit confused on this, a lot of people would love to see, as you all have heard, I'm sure, us kind of go back to kind of World War II style, getting our manufacturing base here in the country to ramp up the way they ramped up the production of tanks, et cetera, during World War II. But Houston, we have a bit of a problem, I've learned, because as many of us are aware, in the decades since World War II, we've offshoreed a good amount of our manufacturing base, which means it's not as easy to just flip a light switch and to get that manufacturing to happen again. And it is for that reason that in this resolution, in asking for an increased manufacturing and distribution of personal protective equipment, we should ask our Congress and ask our White House to incentivize businesses, to provide incentives, financial incentives, for them to do this manufacturing that do not exist right now. So, for more on that, there's a 538 article, that you can Google, 538, and the Defense Production Act, and you'll see where co-host Claire Malone talks about this problem that we have right now as it comes, as it deals with manufacturing. But I believe that if we can do mass testing of our people, protect our first responders as they're administering these tests, I do believe that not only can we save lives, not only can we slow the spread of COVID-19, but we can begin the process of making right our economy. And I want nothing more than to protect our people and get people back out there for the next First Friday, and June, and July, and August, feeling much more comfortable participating in the marketplace, but as it stands, too many of our people don't feel safe, and I don't like them not feeling safe. So I believe that a resolution that addresses testing and personal protective equipment would go a long way, and I would remind everybody that we are a state's capital city, and wow, what a message it would send, that a city that has dealt with a bombing, with tornadoes, would like to come together in this historic moment to unite, to be able to ask for this sort of approach, this national approach to this global pandemic. Those are the first two things. Third, you know, this next economic package, we need relief, you know? I'd like that during that time period, while we're doing that testing, that we see further investment in the individual, the individual so she or he can pay their bills, their groceries, take care of their pets, their prescriptions. I know a lot of people who have not even received their $1,200 check yet, I'm one of them. So I'd like to see further investment in the individual so that they can weather the storm, and they can, so that they can also continue physical distancing and stay safe at home, if they're allowed to stay home, if their work allows. So that's the third thing, is further investment in the individual. The fourth thing is further investment in our small businesses, so many of our small businesses, you know, they're the economic backbone of this country, you all know that, employ so many people, and so much of the money that Congress has allotted for the investment in our small businesses, quite frankly, even though it's historic in proportion, it's not enough. And so I think we need to ask for further rounded investments in our small business community, they are the backbone of our, all of our awards of our country, so that's the fourth thing. Fifth, is not only should we be doing the mass testing and doing the protective measures we can to protect people administering those tests, and investing in the individual, and investing in our small businesses, but fifth, we've got to protect our democracy. We have elections in June, as you all are aware, we have elections in November. All registered Americans who are eligible to vote will vote, and I found out that Milwaukee's city council passed unanimously, where their 300,000 registered voters are able to receive, number one, a application for mail-in ballot, postage paid, number two, return envelope. I reached out to our municipal council here to see if that was possible, and unfortunately, our state government is the one who controls all the levers when it comes to voting. So, I would like to see at the federal level, anything that they can do to ensure that everyone who would like to can vote by mail. If you feel comfortable going and standing in a line in June to go vote, great, go for it. But I can tell you right now, in conversations I've had with my nurse, a retired nurse of a mother who's 76, she's scared, and she, I mean, just scared, and even with her being six foot apart from someone and standing in a line, she's scared. And I would imagine that a lot of the people who call Ward 2 home share those fears. And again, for those who don't, wonderful, stand in line. For those who do share those fears, then asking this next economic relief package to invest in being able to produce ballots that are bilingual, for all the different languages, and just produce that amount of ballots in general, that would go a long way to protecting our democracy. Too many people fought and died for the sacred right to vote, and this would be a way to honor it. And the sooner the better, because if we don't address this until September, that's, that's a, we're racing against the sun in that moment. So protecting our democracy is, I believe, our sacred duty as a council. And then finally, but critically, is right now, the National League of Cities is asking for this next economic relief package to invest in our local and state governments. So I want to walk you back through this, testing, personal protective equipment, investing in the individual, investing in small businesses, protecting our democracy by making sure everyone has access to the ballot. And finally, investing in our local and state governments, specifically to address the revenue shortfalls that we are facing right now. You know, back in 2008, when we faced the financial crisis, our state governments laid off teachers, and we saw the result of that 10 years later in 2018, when we had the teacher walkout, where we had to go protest for two weeks to get funding for our students, for our classrooms, for our teachers, and I am horrified that the cuts facing our state government are going to lead us right back there, I remind everybody that the investments we made in public education following the 2018 moment, that barely got us back to where we were in 2008, but we were already as a state, cutting public education funding. What happens in this moment if our state government finds that they have to do draconian cuts again to public education, and it's not just public education I'm worried about, it is our fire at the local level, our police at the local level. This is not the time to be laying off police officers, this is not the time to be laying off firefighters, and I know that our city manager, and our mayor, and our council has done a phenomenal job in doing everything we can at this present moment to prevent that, but we don't know what's coming, especially as the next round of COVID should arise this fall. And again, to take us back to the thesis statement, which is what a conclusion should always do, right? I would remind us what Chris Murray had to say about this, he says that without that mass testing, if we take off these measures on May 1st, which at least half the country is primed to do, then there's going to be, quote, "A pretty quick rebound, so, quote, 'by mid-July, we'd be right back to where we are now.'" That's why those six steps I just laid out, I believe are the right practical path forward for us, and I would implore the council to consider all six of those things in the crafting of a resolution that we as a capital city could send to our congressional delegation, send to the White House, not with a tone of indignation, but in the spirit of unity, in the spirit of fellowship. Maybe it's because I watched Fellowship of the Ring yesterday, I'm feeling this hopeful, but I believe that those six measures would be a way to get us back to good, save lives, slow the spread of COVID, and get our economy back to good, and protect our democracy. I'm genuinely worried, and I'll just say this, you know, I, for the last eight years, have been writing a book on the Sterling Stockade murders that happened in 1978, and what drew me to those murders and to that story was the history surrounding that moment, an empty downtown by the end of the late 70s, and that persisted through the 80s, and those of you with longer memories than I know that, I am haunted by the images I see right now of a desolate downtown, it is truly, truly horrifying to me to imagine what happens to our coffee shops, what happens to our restaurants, to our bars, to our small businesses, the heart of our cultural renaissance. I believe all six of these steps will, they have the potential to get us back to good. And I think it's way better than doing nothing. Um, I have serious concerns about reopening on May 1st without these uh steps. And I I would really ask the council to consider all six of them as a way to make our people whole and make them less afraid. Thank you for listening. Uh, all of those things are posted on my social media page, uh janesborooc.com um on Facebook and Instagram. I'm going to forward them all to our municipal council as well to see what we can do to uh draft them into a uh more condensed form of a resolution for all of your consideration at the next city council. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilman McCarthy?
Yes, today, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Cooper, I've got a couple of questions for you.
Yes, Councilperson Stone.
Hey, when you talk about, when you talk about testing.
Yeah.
Um, can you be a little more specific regards to what types of testing?
Yes, uh, give me just one moment. Um, I want to pull up something here.
And I'll tell you what I'm kind of trying to get at that I struggle with.
Yeah.
Is as far as I know today, I don't have COVID, right? Um, and if I took a test today, it's going to show negative.
Hmm.
But that doesn't mean two days from now that I would be negative. So I struggle with the fact that we keep asking for additional testing, additional testing. A overwhelming percentage of the tests we do come up negative. Um, what would be the benefit unless I was tested every day? Unless the entire state was tested every day to say, yep, you're still negative? What is the benefit of testing uh for someone that isn't positive?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a wonderful question. So when you, thank you for that, uh, Councilperson. When we look, for instance, at South Korea's approach to this, when they instituted national testing, where they just went through, tested all of their people, what that allowed them to do is, I mean, to your point, yes, many, many people will show up negative. What the mass testing of everyone does is it allows us to have a better understand of where there is local spread, where the hotspots are. And once we're able to identify those hotspots and identify where the local spread is happening, then we can uh isolate the whole area and we can start contact tracing anyone with whom they've come in contact, uh test them to see if they're spreading it. If not, wonderful. But if they are, then we're able to isolate those folks during the uh 14 days or so that it would take to uh prevent them from spreading it further. So right now what's happening is we're kind of playing a game of whack-a-mole, right, where we have such a limited amount of tests so that when we do the testing, we might find it over here, we might find it over there. And so we're kind of addressing it over here or we're addressing it over there. If we were to do that approach to mass testing all at once, and again, when you look at something like Germany, you see it within like a month confined period that you do that sort of testing, then you're able to uh do the sort of contact tracing that I'm talking about right now. And to be honest, there, yeah, there is a really, to your point, there is a really good uh chance that what we would see, which is why we need the drastic ramping up in tests, that, yeah, maybe we we do these tests in June, but maybe we find ourselves doing them again in July. We might find ourselves doing them again in um August. It's, I don't, my understanding is right now it it could possibly not just be a one and done. It could be an ongoing series of things. Moreover, let me give you another example um with that. Uh, really appreciate your question. It's a wonderful question. Um, right now, like I said, I teach at UCO and OCU, and I've been reading everything I can about universities' approaches to this in the fall. Well, let's say that we did all this dramatic uh ramping up of testing in the summer. Well, one of the things I've been hearing as a best practice for universities going into the fall is having enough tests ready so that students, as they enter campus, are able to test them, temperature, et cetera, as they're entering campus, find out who may or may not um be positive and uh test them in that moment uh upon entering campus. So it could be, you know, you do it in the summer, you do it again in the fall. Um, I'd also remind us, right, that we're going to be in the fall probably having the collision of the flu and COVID.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, and I appreciate the clarification on that.
Yeah.
I mean, I especially love the the tracing, contact tracing piece of it. And I think that's something that we need to be uh very mindful of. You know, a lot of the concern that I have, and I've been blessed, I've been able to still work through all this. Um, one of the things that that I'm cognizant of is the plight of the working poor.
That's right.
And it's, I would actually like to uh applaud the actions taken by uh Mayor Holt in then slowly, mindfully, carefully, um, trying to allow people to possibly get back to work. Um, I know there are a lot of programs out there that that can help people. Um, there's a lot of people out there that those programs aren't available for. And those are people that need a place to live, those are people that need to uh feed their families. And uh so I applaud it. I I think we're bringing it in slowly. I agree with Councilman Cooper. Uh, when we open stuff, it isn't like a million people are going to pour in there. I think people will be cautious. It'll take a while for them to regain that trust. Uh, but I think with the steps that we're taking with social distancing, uh other things that we're doing, you know, I'm very hopeful that we can manage this. And I think eventually, you know, we're going to have to manage it. I think it's going to be around for, likely for years. Um, we all realize we can't can't shelter at home for years. And um I think this will be a good chance to see if we can control it with the steps that we're taking. So, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, and I'd like to say a couple of things to that. One is, Todd, it's one of the reasons why I have the respect for you that I do is is your um your commitment to the working class, the working middle class. You know, where you represent is so close to where I grew up, as you know. And a lot of, a lot of those people, I I just know, I know that those classes of people, and they always have my heart, too. And I I I have a lot of them in Ward 2, and I'm I'm really, really worried, really, really worried about uh how they're going to pay their bills in July and in August. Uh, just it's deeply worrying to me. And that's why I want to take these measures, because I believe if we can do a dramatic ramping up of the testing heading into June, the quicker the better. It's like ripping the Band-Aid, right? If we can find out where all these hotspots are and do that kind of contact tracing, that's the quicker our, we know who's healthy, it's the quicker um that we're able to get people healthy, and it's the quicker we're able to open up our economy. And uh a healthy people is a healthy economy. And that that's why I want to do this as quickly as possible. Uh, I think time is of the essence. I'm not one to cower. Uh, I I don't, I I love my apartment, but I I don't love it. It's a dumb, I'm just, um, that's definitely something. Um, I would also say to Mayor Holt, uh, yeah, like Councilperson Stone, I I I'm glad that you are speaking about the importance of keeping these physical distancing uh efforts intact, because if we don't, well, you heard what Chris Murray uh has to say. Uh, I just think that it's it's critical that we highlight to people how important this is. And also to speak out against misinformation out there, people who are comparing the mortality rate to the flu. Um, it it's just five, it's literally five to 10 times more. And in fact, Oklahoma, as you all on council are very aware, we have a higher mortality rate than the national average at about 6%. And so, no, I just don't believe there are any expendable Oklahomans. And I think this is a way to to address uh those things. Um, and I I would I would also say just really thank you to everyone in Ward 2 for the physical distancing effort today for doing. And again, thank you for listening, uh, everybody to this.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Stone, are you finished as well?
I am, thank you, Mayor.
Sure. I don't suppose Councilman Greenwell has joined in? Okay, Councilwoman Hammond?
Yeah, thank you. Um, first, I'd like to um just start off by reminding everyone that um Councilperson Cooper, Councilwoman Nice, and myself are hosting a um virtual town hall. Um, if you go to OKC.gov, you can find more information about how to join that via Zoom um today at 4:00. And today, our topic is on evictions and to speak to um the difficulty and worry about folks being able to pay their bills. Um, evictions is something that the minute this uh we recognize that COVID was in Oklahoma is something that I've been uh in communication with a number of people about to see how we can ensure that people are not um evicted from their current residence um uh because they can't pay their rent due to, not not only due to work, loss of work due to COVID, but also as it relates to prior um difficulties, paying rent, paying bills, um so that they are then forced to try to find a new place to live in the midst of a global pandemic. So we will have um Dick Kling, who is with the OCU Law um pro bono housing clinic with us to talk about resources and um the Federal Cares Act eviction moratorium um and what that covers, as well as uh Michael Figgins from Legal Aid, again, to talk about what resources are available. Um, so uh anyone who's interested in whether you're potentially facing eviction or know someone or just want that information to be able to share with people, I asked for you to join us today at 4:00. Um, I'd also like to um speak to, you all might have heard of a, in the last week or so, a woman who has been missing, Leslie Driscoll. Um, it's been pretty prevalent in the news uh about her, her um her, her disappearance. Um, and it was reported on Sunday that she was found. I actually received an email this morning from a friend of hers who has expressed that she is now missing again. Um, the last known place that she was was being released from the county jail sometime before midnight on Sunday. Um, I do want to respect their, her family and friends and her and her privacy um and not necessarily go into the details of what he has shared with me. Um, but at this point, it sounds like they're going to have to go through another missing persons um report that that's not anything that's currently open or active at the moment, but that she is missing again. And um, and I just want to please ask that if anyone, there's plenty of information online about um and in the news about her appearance, you know, what her her physical appearance and what she looks like. Um, but now, since there is no missing persons case active, um, then they're going to have to start that open. I just wanted to ask that if anyone sees her or thinks they've seen her, um, please reach out to myself at ward6@OKC.gov. Um, phone number is on the website as well if you want to call. And I'm happy to try to get you in contact either with the police or with um with her family and friends as they work to try to locate her um and get that new missing persons um report up and going. So then you could just contact that missing persons email or phone number um in the event that you see her. Um, I also, to speak to um COVID-19 and the um possibility of revising our guidelines um about certain businesses being open and um what guidelines those businesses should be following this coming week, I do echo uh Councilperson Cooper's um concerns about our infrastructure not really meeting um the need that we will have. Um, and uh I personally am not, and I know I've heard from a lot of people um that they're not supportive of any efforts to revise those guidelines if they are not adequately protecting workers um as well as um uh giving workers an opportunity uh to report businesses who are not following said guidelines. Um, and particularly as it relates to um the the idea about um testing. And I want to kind of speak to this because I think it's something that I've really been thinking about um in the last week or so, um is the county health department has been providing us with updates um through our emergency management department as well um about our ZIP code map of the city and where where cases are are concentrated. My issue with that map is that it doesn't tell us where testing is happening. So we might know that there are certain ZIP codes that are hotspots for cases, but we don't know if that's just because those are ZIP codes that have easier access to testing. Um, do they have uh more confidence in going to get tested? Um, so really, when we think about that idea of mass testing, um, that's, that's why, is because you can't say that's a hotspot because of cases when you don't know um if testing is adequately happening across the board for people. Um, in addition, my concern with us having um people feel more confident going back out into the world, regardless of how often or many times public health officials or community leaders say, um, you know, this is not an opportunity to go have your, you know, 30-person party. Um, people will be doing that. Um, I know I've already heard reports of just even this last weekend, even though in our city uh restrictions were not lifted, um, people having gatherings of 10 or more, um, people being in grocery stores, um, being busier with people who are not wearing masks or any other protective equipment. Um, so it really does, um, regardless of what are, what we say in in guidelines or recommendations, um, there, there's, there's a difficulty of this coming Friday, more people feeling okay going out um and congregating in places and especially without the proper public in, public health infrastructure to contact trace, there, those folks' jobs get infinitely more difficult. Um, if I personally am not going on to multiple places, I'm not, you know, going to a restaurant or um running multiple errands at once, and I, and someone, and I contract a virus, when that contact trace tracer talks to me, I have maybe three places, three people that I've said I've come in contact with um that need to be tested or or contacted. That gets so much harder if if more and more people are feeling forced to go to work, um, are feeling, are feeling forced to to be back out in in the economy. Um, so with, I I echo Councilperson's, Cooper's um call for increased investment in that public health infrastructure, not just of testing, but of that contact tracing, um, because we know and we've seen from models um in other places um that spike. Because, and I think um I listened to a, an interview the other day where um I think this is is something important to remember, um, is that even public health experts from the beginning of this, the goal, the stated goal was never that no one would get sick. The stated goal was to flatten that curve. And um because, because our our health infrastructure needed that, um, needed that line. Um, and I have not seen the evidence, and I'm not confident that our public health and health infrastructure is in a place that can absorb spikes. Um, the additional uh piece that I I want to um, I want to address regarding that is um an article I read about Senator Elizabeth Warren's brother who died um last week from COVID-19. He was in a a care facility, and there was a few, there are a few people in that facility who contracted COVID. So he was, he was tested and got a positive or test, positive uh test results. And not until 11 days later did he start showing symptoms um of COVID. So again, regardless of whether someone's expressing symptoms, they could be an asymptomatic carrier and being, and spread that throughout the community um unknowingly before they're ever tested in our current, our current infrastructure. And that is incredibly worrisome, particularly for those folks in the working poor um and in those vulnerable categories who feel they have no other option but to go back to work right now um because they need to pay their bills. And again, at the point from Councilperson Cooper's um to be drafted resolution about being able to pay people to stay home, right now, it is not an option for someone who is um, who is having to choose, who does not fall into um the 65-plus or immunocompromised, but is terrified to go to their bartending job or who is terrified to go to their job at a salon um, or even to the, to their job as a cashier. It is not, it is not a real choice for them right now to be able to pay their bills or to feel like they're putting themselves at risk. And so right now, what our collective leadership is asking is for the working poor to be on the front lines of getting sick. to be on the front lines of getting sick. Because my job in an office, I have all of the opportunity to, even if my job was telling me to go back to work, I barely interact with people throughout the day, except for by phone and by, by other forms of technology. So I have so much, so many opportunities and that, and many people might think that or say that it's still a choice for those folks who are in the working poor that they can, they can just choose not to go to work, but if it's not a real option if they don't have the opportunity for economic relief with no, no, no means testing. So I, I applaud and I'm happy to support Councilperson Cooper's resolution, particularly for that point of being able to support people staying home and because not everyone has, has a real choice right now and, and that worries me. And so I know from my end, I am not, I'm not ready to support any reba, revising of guidelines that does not have strong protections for our workers in those positions that right now we don't. The city does not have the infrastructure to be able to to pay people to stay home. The state seems to be unwilling to do so and as does the federal government right now. So, so I'm, what I'm hoping is that we can revise our guidelines so that we can have at least some infrastructure in place to, to allow workers to and, and members of the, other members of the community, if they're going to a business and those businesses are not following guidelines to protect their workers and protect the public, that there's a way to report those and making sure that there's some, some real ability to enforce the, the ability to make sure workers and the public are wearing masks, that the physical distancing is taking place. I know I've heard from folks that work at places like Walmart, that Walmart was not allowing their employees to to wear masks because they said it would scare customers. And that is just not that, that is an unworkable situation for someone who is worried about being able to pay a bill or buy food for their kids. And or putting themselves and then their family at risk by potentially bringing a virus home. So again, I want to, I'm, I'm happy to support that resolution. And, and I'm hopeful to do whatever I can to at least get the resources out to people. So that if people are afraid, are trying to make that choice right now, that I'm, I'm happy to help coordinate you getting connected to resources rather than having to feel like you have to go back out into an economy that does not care if you live or die. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Knight.
Thank you. I, I first wanted to thank, thank you, Mayor, for the proclamation to acknowledge April as National Minority Health Month and to recognize Black Maternal Health Week, which I spoke about last council meeting. And I do have it right here for those who may not have seen it yet. So I just want to, wanted to first mention that we honor Minority Health Month because it is very crucial with what is taking place that we focus on our minority health and the concerns of lack of testing, lack of PPE and of being able to adequately go forth with feeling comfortable and healthy and safe enough to maneuver through society at this time. So again, I, I just want to take time to again, thank our frontline workers, all of those who work for our city, who get the thankless job. And just want to say thank you to all of those people because you're, what you do is invaluable for the are staying at home and those who are also ask thanking you for what you do for us every day. And you are also putting yourselves at risk as well as your family members. And, you know, that's not something that I'm sure a lot of families likely when it comes to just what's happening in the circumstances. I also want to thank the essential workers, but most of all right now, especially with the acknowledgement and the announcement of our state wanting to get back to Russia reopening. I, I want to thank those businesses that decided that the making that tough decision to stay closed for health and safety for the business. And I know that's definitely not something that is easy right now if they've already been closed for so long. Especially our minority businesses, not just in Oklahoma City, but across this country who are tremendously having hard times when it comes to getting the PPP allotment and also of the EIDL allotment or just in general, any kind of ninety percent of our minority population who are business owners who have a payroll of less than, less than five people. So it's, I know it's been very difficult for, for them. So to those businesses who have decided to stay closed because of health, health is first. I want to first say thank you to you all. And I know there are quite a few again within the Northeast quadrant within Ward Seven. As we look to some other things and I'll get back to the conversation of COVID nineteen, there is a, a free food giveaway today. I wanted to make mention of that through the Strong Neighborhood Initiative and other partners. So if you, if you need or you know, someone in need, please visit the JFK Park sixteen fifty okay from eleven to twelve today, as well as Christ Temple Community Church, twenty-seven seventeen North Kelly. And that's from twelve thirty until one thirty. First Presbyterian Church from one fifteen to two fifteen and their address is one zero zero one Northwest Twenty-Fifth Street. And also, we do not want to forget Restore OKC. For those who may be seeking other food options, they do have a market and they have wonderful items that you can purchase as far as fresh produce and frozen meats and just best, other things that are in their building in location. And you can see also on the side with the, what they are growing for the community and their neighbors in their backyard. Before I forget as well, I want to send our well wish, well wishes to our, our Muslim community who are observing Ramadan at this time. I know this is a crucial time and unfortunately, as a lot of folks experienced Easter apart in virtual, this is a time of reflection and a different time for our Muslim community as they reflect virtually as well. So just want to wish them well wishes during this time. And I'll get back to the conversation of PPP, PPE and testing. And I also support wholeheartedly the joint resolution that the biggest council members mentioned as we're looking at testing. And I know when we get our, our information every night as far as the data report, it's important, in my opinion, for me to share that with, with those that I serve so they understand that this is impacting our communities. And although, you know, I, I just most recently started showing the zip codes and we, of course, know in Northeast Oklahoma City do not testing, we're waiting for testing to go online. And the information I have received is tomorrow, which is the twenty-ninth, that we should have testing implemented in a local for the Northeast quadrant. As we work towards that, I want our African American community to realize that this is serious, just as it is across this nation. You know, granted, our, with our state, our numbers are not as high as we've seen in other cities and states. And we are very fortunate for that, but it does not mean it cannot take place. So I, I do urge that our community understands the impact of not being physically or socially distant from others as far as those six feet. And the, the downside of that is unfortunate for our under-resourced communities in some aspects, because a lot of them are multi-generational, living in one household. So you have who can subject that older grandparent with a minor, maybe under five in that same household and, and you may have something to where everyone can get infected by that. So I just want to make mention that lack of PPE is obviously a concern for everyone. And I reminded of a story that I read yesterday about a Missouri nerd. He asked for PPP and she passed away one week before her retirement. She had been working for over thirty years, almost forty years. So when you have people on the front line asking for PPE because they understand what the impacts are and they are perishing from the lack of PPE, we should be very concerned about what is taking place. And again, opening our, our communities and our economy too soon. And also I want our churches to understand the impact too. I know a lot of us are ready to get back to the church, especially a lot of our, our black communities. And we have guidelines that are in place asking for every other pew. But we are still under where we're asking for gatherings of less than ten if available and if possible, some churches are extending that for at least a couple of weeks to not meet and do virtual services. And we appreciate that. I believe it's crucial right now for all, if they can, our churches to continue that if possible. And one of the things I also wanted to mention and this past week, I, because I, I want to understand what's going on, especially after the governor announced what the next steps were. There was a town hall that Senator Langford hosted a virtual town hall with the governor and I, I watched it because it's important to know all parts of the conversation, not just the people that we assume we align with, but just to understand especially the impacts of how it's going to affect our communities. And one of the things that I will say that we, you doubted that conversation or that I have received that I did not know previously is that there will be testing in all nursing homes for Oklahoma and those working in nursing homes in Oklahoma, and they are expecting that to be done by the end of May, uh, end of May. So that is a, a, a good comfort in, in that aspect because that is a vulnerable population for our state as we've seen those numbers spike for our seniors. Whereas again, for our communities of color, we need to continue to realize that we are still being impacted every day. Now, a couple, quite a few spikes in some of our communities and zip codes that are within the Northeast quadrant. And we do understand that we have had, and from the information I've received, one, uh, one person that has passed away from COVID nineteen in the, in the Northeast quadrant. So we, we do also understand that the value of save, of lives saved by social and physical distancing, it outweighs the cost. So while this is working, we want to continue to stress that we, we must protect our seniors, we must protect our most vulnerable and we must protect of those who have been extremely impacted or family members. And I shared a sentiment with James, my mom is a senior as well and she's terrified. And it's when I have to run her errands, she makes, you know, she's very distant from me. And that's hard for us. And consider those who have lost family members again, who have to decide which ten people are going to go to a service or, or the graveside service and who else is going to sit and watch it from a screen to bury a loved one during this time. This is not the time for us to be selfish in that aspect because the life, again, we might save may be our own. So I want to thank our Oklahoma City County Health Department for continuously being in contact with, with information. If call them, they immediately respond. And that's very helpful for us to ensure that we're assisting our communities to better our, our, better our information that is disseminated to the people who ask for it. So again, thank you to all of, all of the folks who are doing the work because you are extremely appreciated. And again, I, I truly support us with this resolution. And I want to continue to talk, even with the antibody testing, know drive the conversation to in our bodies, but we understand that it's fifty-five percent accuracy when it comes to in our body testing. And that's from our public health officials that we've spoken with. So those are things again, that I, I just wanted to make mention. And for those who live in Southwest Oklahoma City, Walmart parking lot is available for those to, to receive testing. And for those who go through the call with the Oklahoma City County Health Department, want to continue to stress that if you call and make that appointment through that four two five number, testing is free. So please, for those who have been curious to know if you have to pay for a test, if you go through that information, there is no charge to you. So as we continue to work through the things that, that we need to do, we want to continue to get the information out. But I totally agree with the previous council members in, in saying that this is, this is, it's early and it's, it's worrisome because I, I worry about everybody who does not have access or who may not be able to protect themselves from, from this virus. And for those who cannot or will not wear a face covering because they've already been seen as a threat. These are, these are difficult times we live in, these are difficult things we have to face. And a lot of folks have to choose what they're going to do. And even with our seniors and their lupus medication, because of what has already taken place and, and the medication, they, they have to choose if they're going to take it because they're not sure if they're going to have anymore because of our government, our federal government saying that this is something that needs to be taken in order to combat COVID nineteen. So, you know, our, our thoughts are truly with all of those people who have to make these hard decisions because even with us, these are hard decisions, we have to make them. And we keep all of those folks in mind when we make those decisions. So again, thank you for recognizing Minority Health Month. And those are the concerns when it comes to minority health. It's already lack of access for our communities of color to receive just a doctor visit or insurance that are underinsured, underpaid. So those are already difficulties for our community. And when it comes to the infant and maternal mortality rate, especially for women of color, they die at alarming rates. So we want to continue to have those conversations as we deal with tho, those factors as well as the factors that come ahead with COVID nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Stone-Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you say no? Thank you?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Moving on to item eleven, City Manager Report. Go ahead, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, so we have Kathy O'Connor on the line with the Alliance for Economic Development to give us an update on the Small Business Continuity Program. And so Kathy, do that presentation.
Hello, thank you. So we completed the receipt of all the applications for the small business program. We received just over six hundred applications. About two hundred and fourteen of those were for the cash incentive, two twenty-three for the forgivable loan and a hundred and sixty for the low interest loan. We did have six applications that requested the technical assistance only. So there, some of those incentive forgivable loan and low interest loan applications also requested technical assistance. Of the six hundred and three, we are in the process of mapping all of them and now double checking the map, the mapping of the applications. And we believe that there's probably about sixty that are not in the city limits. So I think we're looking at closer to five hundred and fifty that are, that meet the requirement to be within the city limits of Oklahoma City. We also believe that about two hundred of them are within a low income census tract. So about a third of the applications we received, we think would meet that requirement. And we are double checking all of that right now. As far as the amount of funding that's been requested, you know, we don't know how many of these applications that we received, don't, some of them are not going to meet the basic requirements. They're not They're not going to demonstrate the 50% revenue law. You know, as I mentioned, we already know some are not in the city limits. When you total up, the total amount of money that was requested through the program, it's over $20 million. So, um, obviously, w- we, we are in the process of reviewing and scoring all of these applications and will make, you know, ma- make recommendations about funding up to the $5 million that was approved by City Council. Um, I think once we have that scoring completed, we will be in a better position to talk about, um, you know, what next steps might be. Um, and, uh, get back to City Council with, with some ideas about that. But obviously a big need out there, um, you know, um, uh, most of the, most of the funding requests were in the low, in the loan programs, either the forgivable or the low interest loan programs. Obviously those had the doll- highest dollar amount, um, that companies were eligible to apply for as well. Any questions?
Uh, will you explain what the, um, as far as the forgivable loan and the low interest loan, what the, uh, employment numbers were supposed to be as far as for the applicants?
Uh, 50 or fewer employees for both of those. The cash incentive was available to companies with less than 15.
Thank you.
Um, so just as, as maybe a little bit more information, we, we have a team of about 20 people now reviewing all of these applications. Um, the bank has, has done the initial review for all of the loan applications and now staff is, is double checking them to make sure they meet the, the minimum requirements that the city has. Um, we hope to have, uh, the first meeting of the, well, we will have the first meeting of the dispersment committee later this week. And they will have to meet again next week in hopes to get checks out the, by the end of the first week of, full week, full week of May.
How many are in the dispersment committee?
Um, I don't have that list right in front of me, Councilwoman. I, I think there's about, um, eight people on it.
Kathy, this is Craig. Um, I've got my list here and there are, it's, um, there's one, two, three, four, five. Yes, it's eight people on that committee.
This is, uh, Councilwoman Hammond. Thank you for the timeline. That was going to be my first question. I also wanted to ask, I know, uh, I have memory that in the resolution, one of the, um, items related to approving or prioritizing applications was going to be what other assistance those businesses, um, received or had been applying for. And, and I'm curious about kind of the, um, the process of that because I, um, I've, I've been, I, I don't know if that was yes, when that was. I, I read an article, um, related to that. Um, there's been some, some data showing that up to 90% of, um, minority or, or women-owned businesses did not receive, um, any of the paycheck, program, um, from the federal government. And the, the data sort of seems to be saying that, um, largely that was due to them not, essentially having the wrong bank or being, um, being part of smaller banks. And so those banks, uh, they're, they, the article tells a story of one, uh, woman, I think in North Carolina, um, somewhere on the East Coast, who began being, her bank wasn't finally able to apply for, start up the application process the day that the money ran out or was announced to have run out. And, um, this is a, she's a realtor, um, part of the LGBTQ, uh, Chamber of Commerce, black woman, um, who essentially, because she had not had a, a relationship with one of these larger banks, um, she, she essentially is not now, uh, unless the federal government opens up another round of funding, um, which I believe there was some in the, the last, uh, federal package passed. But I'm just kind of sort of curious how that works with ours because I can imagine that we probably have a pretty similar experience here in Oklahoma that, um, I know, uh, when we spoke with you and Cameron from, uh, Bank First, that Bank First was one of those banks that wasn't requiring prior, um, a prior relationship to be able to work with them to apply. But, um, it, what it's sounding like is that these larger banks that are national, um, just they have the infrastructure and the ability to fast track through that process, whereas these maybe smaller state or regional banks or credit unions don't necessarily have that. And those are typically the banks that are working with, um, folks who have been traditionally underbanked. So I'm sort of just curious for, i- is that, I'm guessing that's information that was disclosed as part of the application process, but is there kind of a ranking, um, process in our review to say, well, you received some funds from the PPP, so maybe we're, you're not going to get as much as these other folks who didn't? Or is that, is that the process?
Yeah, our, um, program did not, um, disqualify people if they received PPP or EIDL funding. But we do have this evaluation, it's kind of like a demonstration of need. You know, how badly do you need the money? And if you've got those other things, you may not need it as bad as somebody else.
Gotcha, okay.
So, but we are trying to do that and that, you know, it's that kind of review that adds to the amount of time that it takes to review each individual application. So we're trying to be very careful and, um, um, you know, obviously this was a, a, that, you know, maybe overly successful in the number of applications we got, but, um, you know, we, we, we hope that we can really make a big difference for some of these small companies here in Oklahoma City.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I, I think even as we talk about, and I want to go back to the conversation of because I don't have a, a number as far as the census tracts, hard for me to determine some of the other questions. Um, because obviously there's, I, even with this, then, income census tracts, there's a, for, who, who can actually really get the, if that, if that makes sense. Um, because low-income tracts that have been deemed low-income tracts, uh, low-income census tracts are some of those income, those census tracts that are not as much of a need, there's not actually a need for some of those areas as there are for us.
Right, yeah. Uh, you know, we, and, and obviously we're trying to find a, a standardized measure for, um, for all of this. And the low-income census tract is something obvi- measured by somebody else that we can apply over the entire city. Um, so, you know, we just, we'll just have to look at that and, um, we'll have more data once we double check all the mapping. I, you know, but again, about 200 of them were in low-income census tracts. So that's, that's a third and our goal was 25%. So I think that's, um, you know, that's, that's a, that's pretty good.
Do we, do we know as far as minority businesses, those that have applied?
If they're minority owned, you mean?
Correct.
I don't have that data. I don't know that, I don't know that we asked that question. I, I'll have to find out from staff.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, if there are any other questions, the, um, only other things I have are just a quick overview on the, uh, reports that we have and just real quickly I'll cover. We have the, uh, sales tax report and this is the sales tax for April. So when you think of that, it's going to be the last part of March, first part of April. And so it won't have, um, uh, as much of, I'm sorry, it was the, it was the last half of February, first half of March and won't have as much of the effect. Uh, no, it's not. Get back out. It's the last half of March, first half of April. So we don't have as much effect from, um, the, uh, COVID-19 and the businesses being shut down. And so this, the sales tax was down, but only down 2%. Um, use tax was up 19%. Combined sales and use tax for the year are right about right on target. When you look at it, the sales tax is a little below projections, use tax is a little above, so right on target. Our expectation is to see the May check and the, um, June check be our most significant in this fiscal year, um, impacts for COVID. Um, we are expecting that to continue on into next year. As you know, we've had some discussion about the budget. So that's just a quick overview on the, um, uh, sales tax check. We do have the third quarter interim financial report in the package. Again, same, same story. It's really looking at the time period before we started to see the effect of COVID. And so we're a little bit off on our revenues, a little below target on the revenues, but also below on our expenditures. Um, some of that is salary savings for vacant positions. We have our hiring freeze-in place and we had several vacant positions coming into this uh, before that time. And so, um, uh, the interim financial report looks pretty good. But again, we're expecting all of that to begin to change going into the end of the year. We are going to hold back on expenditures as much as we possibly can to try to, uh, minimize the, the effect of the loss of revenue. And we'll keep you updated on that, um, as we get better information and see where we are, uh, with our revenue going into the end of the year. But again, we are expecting sales and use tax to be affected by that. The last report that I have on is the, um, hotel tax collections. And these hotel, hotel tax collections, it's reported through March 31st, but it's really for, because of the lag in time, similar to what we have with sales tax, it's just for hotel activity through, uh, February. So it doesn't show that significant impact that we're going to see in hotel tax yet, um, because this is just through February. So it's basically flat, um, and pretty well showing that we're on target for the year. Um, but we, we will see that change significantly in the next few months as we get those reports out. So we'll keep you updated as we get better information on that. The only other thing I have in the City Manager Reports is claims and payroll and that's posted online. And all of these reports will be online. That's all that I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Um, finally, we are at item 12, citizens to be heard. We have one who has signed up to speak, uh, Nick Brook, are you on the line? And push star six if you're muted on your phone. Nick Brook? I'll give about three more seconds. Is he on the line, Francis? Can you tell?
Yes, he is.
Can you unmute him?
Mr. Brook, are you there?
Are you able to unmute him?
Yes, he's unmuted.
All right, Francis says, the clerk says that Nick has been unmuted, but is not responding. Uh, he was the only person who had signed up to speak and that is the last item on our agenda.
Mayor?
Nick?
No, no, I'm sorry, uh, but we're true, it's James Cooper. Um, I'm curious because it seemed like throughout the meeting, there were a, a couple moments where someone had tried to join us as a citizen and, and wasn't able to, we couldn't unmute them or whatever it was. Um, I don't know if IT, you know, it's going to resolve necessarily right now, but just something to look at before we do the, the next meeting.
Yeah, I would suggest if anybody, there were a couple times, you're right. There were also several times when people did call in and, and were easily heard. Um, if anyone like Mr. Brook or I think John Pettis I called on and didn't respond, if they were there and for some reason we just couldn't hear him, I, I would certainly encourage them to call the clerk's office, uh, today or later and let's try to resolve what happened. It, it may just be that they weren't there or this is bad timing and, and in this case, Mr. Brook left his computer for a minute. But, um, but if they were there and we just could not hear them for some reason, uh, please let us know and let's try to resolve that. Obviously it was working for others, but it seems like the system is, it's functioning on some level. But, uh, we obviously want to make sure that if people are there, that they can be heard. Last call for Nick Brook and then we will adjourn. All right, thank you all, especially let me, hello? Thank you all, especially our, uh, IT staff and our clerk staff for all that they've done. Uh, it's a lot of work to put this together, I know. And, uh, but it's, it's all in all, it's, it's working well and, and it's, uh, we're very grateful that it allows us this opportunity to continue to do business in a safe way. So thank you, thank you, thank you to our IT staff, our clerk staff, Francis Percy, everybody. Thank you so much. And that concludes our agenda and our business today and we are adjourned.